Good evening. It is 5:31. If we could call the regular board meeting to the Amherst Executive Village Board of Education, please, by standing and pointing the flags on the monitor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Mr. Engel.
Present.
Mrs. Gillis.
Here.
Dr. Messer.
Present.
Mrs. Wachols.
Here.
Mr. Zappa.
Here.
I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, including all endensments which you received today electronically. A motion and a second. A motion and a second is in discussion comments. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis. Hi. Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mrs. Wachols. Mr. Engel.
Hi. I know we have lots of good news reports tonight, so Mr. Sayers.
Yes, we're going to start out, Mr. Tepner, right here. Our principal at Powers Elementary, it's all yours.
Thank you. President Engel, school members, it's really, this is going to be the best, quickest, maybe easiest of all the good news reports. I actually have people, so if I can have Mayor Scott Williams come up here and Michelle Tellier come up here, a couple of people to celebrate. First, I want to introduce you, you know, we have a big loss coming with the losing Mrs. Rourke as our assistant principal. We found her fantastic. Assistant principal will be taking the helm on 2022-23 school year. So I want to introduce her, give her a moment to just introduce herself, and then I'll tell you a little bit about why I have Michelle Tellier up here. With that, here's Mayor Scott Williams.
Hello, everyone. I am thrilled to be here. Thank you so much for all the support and thank you to the board. So I'm actually leaving the school counseling position at Amherst Junior High. I've enjoyed that role, but I am so thrilled and excited to be entering the Powers team and looking forward to a fantastic year ahead. And so, thank you very much, and I appreciate this opportunity.
And I've asked Michelle Tellier to come here, so we do to you in your support and your understanding of everything we're doing, supporting the addition of a wellness position has been a huge thing for us at Powers, more than you may even know. It's adding a sixth special to Powers allows us to do some things that we could not do this year, and we're very excited about. Things, supporting kids with interventions that we would not be able to, the ability to coordinate planning of teachers that right now just isn't possible. So we're very excited about the position itself, and even more excited to say that we found the right person for the position. And with that, I'd like to introduce Michelle Tellier, who we've just hired to move from her second grade position into the wellness special position.
I too. We are just seeing more and more mental health, especially after the pandemic, and not only mental health, but behaviors. So it used to be kind of old school thinking that the kids are just going to pick this stuff up, but we're really learning more and more that we need to teach these behaviors. So I really thank you for the opportunity to go into the classrooms. I'm excited to go in, I'm hoping the classroom teachers then, if I teach it, that that's going to come through. Our building is a wonderful property to have, but we are so big that I'm hoping to be the person to kind of connect us, to teach them those behaviors, those terms, and then I'm hoping also to do big projects with us all so that we can bring that together. And thank you for letting us do that. Thank you for letting us be the building block, and I hope that we see some big differences because I'm really excited.
We have a lot of other things to share tomorrow, obviously being state of the schools, we have lots of things to celebrate there. But I will say just one other additional thing on top of all this, just say, right now at Powers, we have a lot of kids who had a lot of needs, and our staff has taken on such, I just have tremendous pride in how they have handled not just COVID, because it's not just COVID, what Michelle touched on a minute ago. Kids, kids have lost some basic social graces that we are having to teach within kids, that things you wouldn't even imagine. I'll give you a fairly crude example, even though this is being recorded, like kids will come up in the middle of a lesson and say, "Piru poop." And that's not something that would have happened, and those would be like third graders. Like you wouldn't hear a kid say that, but they, this being out of social norms for a year and a half, they're not really picking up on social cues about things that are typically said or not said in a large group of people. So our teachers are not just teaching math and literacy and science and teaching how to be a kind person, but they're also trying to teach kids some social norms, and they're doing a fantastic job. So I would just say, I would love to say part of our good news is just like how proud I am of our teachers and our staff as we've moved through this, and we have some teachers back here also. So I'll say, please, please give them a round of applause. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Thank you. You're wanting to run out?
Yes, Debbie Melba, from Ohio School Board Association.
I'm here from OSBA and the Northeastern Regional Executive Committee tonight to recognize Rex Engel for his 15 years of service. And it's an honor to do so. I know Rex from JBS.
Thank you.
And he, 15 years is a long time, and he's shown that he's very dedicated to the students, the children of this district and the state of Ohio and JBS. So he's very deserving of this, and I really enjoy working with him.
Thank you, Del. It's been a pleasure to serve with you at the JBS, as well as it's always a pleasure to serve here in Amherst. Thank you. Thank you. Amy, we got another good news?
Yes. Okay, sounds good.
Hi, guys. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us. We have Representative Joe Miller here to give a commendation to our April basketball team on their successful season. So maybe if you could come up here to the middle so you can be on camera.
Speed all of the paint, right? One more in three seconds. Their teams work out the court, it's more efficient.
President Engel, thank you again, and the rest of the team, I always say team because it takes a team to be successful. This is always nice to get back here. I can't believe the number of times I'm being back here, but it's because of excellence that continues to happen in schools. Whether it be in the high school or the junior high, excellence continues on. I appreciate the opportunity to come from the Ohio House of Representatives. I'm back in the district now, so I get to do a bunch of these real quick. We would have done this closer to the season, but you know, I officiate, so you guys can stand your best behavior on that court, play within the rules, and we couldn't get the days to work out together, either being Columbus or on the court, or you would be on the court, and we couldn't make it happen. So Mother Nature said, "We'll bring back winter when you play," so that we don't think about golf instead, when you think about basketball, right? So with that, on behalf of myself and Speaker Bob Cupp of the Ohio House of Representatives, my District 56, we are happy and honored to congratulate you, and I'm going to read this in a moment, for your excellence on the court for the 2021-22 season. Each member of the Amherst Junior High Girls Basketball Team is an outstanding young athlete, successfully combining personal ability and competitive spirit with the highest levels of good sportsmanship. With admirable dedication, the comments have worked diligently toward attaining an ultimate efficiency in basketball, and I hear you're pretty good in the classroom, too. And as a result, they won the Southwestern Tournament Championship, compiled a perfect 18-0 record. Nice job. This season, the accomplishments and the leadership of the Amherst Junior High School Girls Basketball Team, both in and out of athletic competition, are a justifiable source of pride for you, and it's a reflection not only on the players, but also on their families, their coaches, their school, and their community. The maturity and experience that the members have gained through their participation in this sport will greatly aid you in meeting the challenges of the future. Thus, with sincere pleasure, we commend Amherst Junior High School Girls Basketball Team for their exemplary achievement and salute the players and coaches and some of Ohio's finest citizens. And I wish Coach Hall was here and the rest of your coaches, but with that, I say congratulations and we give him a nice warm up. Better. Sorry, no, Sister Tellier said you can shoot a picture as well. All righty, thank you so much, ladies. Congratulations. Are there any other good news? Not? I don't think anyone has signed up to events for the public, is that correct? So we have nothing on the hearing of the public from that perspective on that form, but we do have Item 6, which is public hearing in the following category of applications. Does anyone wish to address anything about those grants? This is the time to have the opportunity to ask, address anything regarding the public grants that we have. Applications there that you can see. If there's not, you don't need a motion. You don't need a motion?
Thank you.
If there's nobody signed up for the public, if you're hearing the coverage from general patrons, it will move right on to Item 8, which would be you, Ms. Drescher.
This evening, I would like to present the district data profiles. These profiles are from the 61 data points that the Department of Education has compiled from a variety of sources. I just emailed this to Michael, so if it doesn't, if it doesn't show up on the screen, that's not a problem. You all, board members, Mr. Sayers, Mr. Molnar, Mrs. Walker, all have a copy of a narrative about 17 graphs, and then each of the 61 data elements in your packet for this evening. It's something that really, it's immense, 61 data elements. And it's everything from the size of our district, year-end enrollment, to the demographic data, our race data, it has tax and valuation data, it has expenditure data, revenue by source data. It's really very interesting, but it's way too much information to present all 61 data elements. Some of the board have seen similar presentations in the past. I don't intend to go over even everything that I have in the book this evening, but I just want to say that when you, when you carefully look at these data elements and when you look at some of them in tandem, it really tells a story about the district. You can point forward a couple of slides. Year-end enrollment, it just shows, you know, this is, this is our relative size. And what I presented to you this, this evening are the 14 districts in Lorain County. I can't possibly fit 608 districts on the screen, right? And what's more meaningful are similar districts anyway. What is the district average, what is the statewide average for year-end enrollment is 2,560, and we were last year 3,550. So we're larger than the state average, but obviously we're smaller than several districts in the county. Go ahead, Mike. This one is very meaningful. This has two y axes, which can be very confusing. The bar, the vertical bar, is the average classroom teacher salary. The orange line is the percentage of teachers in each district with greater than 10 years of experience. So if you're looking at the average classroom salary, Amherst's teachers enjoy the highest average classroom salary in Lorain County. There's a reason for it. So if you follow the orange lines, we also have Amherst, the greatest percentage of teachers with greater than 10 years' experience. So if you don't compare the two together, it's not looking at other districts with an apples-to-apples comparison. But I think this slide is one of the most meaningful in the data profiles with two data elements juxtaposed. Go ahead, Mike. Administrators' average salary, this is meaningful, you can read the narrative in the packet. Go ahead, Mike. Pupil administrator ratio, this one I think is very important, and it tells the story of lean operations in Amherst. We have 202 pupils per administrator in Amherst. The statewide average is 134 pupils to one administrator. Very meaningful. Go ahead. Administrator expenditures per pupil, and this would include administrator salaries, but it would also include superintendent expenditures, principal expenditures, those certain 2,400, if you will, function codes. Doesn't mean anything to you, but I'm a geek. So if you take a look at the administrative expenditures per pupil then for fiscal '21, Amherst was 1,025 and change per pupil. The statewide average, however, is 1,763 and change. Another district in our county, you see, exceeds 3,000. For whatever reason, we're not looking at all of the reasons, right? And the elephant in the room is, I would probably save this till last normally, is every district, there's a human element to it in the treasurer's office, and that different districts may code things differently. So what might show as a 2,200 support might show in another district as an admin expenditure. Another district might consider it that in the classroom, an instructional expenditure. So obviously, there are nuances that these data elements can't encompass altogether. But this, again, is a very powerful illustration of lean operations in the district. Go ahead, go ahead, Mike. Shows assessed valuation per pupil, the statewide average is over 184,000 in assessed valuation per pupil. Our district is nearly 166, and we have districts in our county that exceed 300,000 in assessed valuation. And just to review what assessed valuation is, is 35% of the market value is what assessed valuation is. So if any property is valued at 100,000, 35,000 of it is assessed valuation, and that value, that valuation, that AV, is what the effective tax rates are applied to, to yield the tax. Go ahead. District per pupil revenue raised by 1 mil of property tax, this is very interesting. We raise $166 or thereabouts, the statewide average is 184. If you infer what this means then, is that we are $19. District per pupil revenue raised by 1 mil of property tax, so we are nearly $20 less per pupil in property taxes raised with 1 mil than what the statewide average is. That's, again, very powerful. That means our local effective rate is lower than many districts in the state. Go ahead. This graph, the green bars, the dark green bars, which are all other districts in Lorain County, show the residential and agricultural property as a percentage of the total AV, of the total assessed valuation. You can see Amherst is quite high, at 77%. The statewide average is 71.79%, I believe. This means that districts with a lower residential and agricultural percentage means that there's a greater share of commercial industrial. You understand that? So if res-ag is higher, commercial industrial is lower. If res-ag is low, commercial industrial is high. So we are about 6% higher than the statewide average, and that just means that there are essentially fewer commercial industrial opportunities in the Amherst district. That's, everyone knows that, right? We're primarily residential district, so. ODE funding per pupil, I can't read the callouts. Amherst's funding per pupil from the state is 3,650, and the statewide average is 4,232. What this means then is that we raise a greater amount of local revenue per pupil than what our state funding is, right? That's, that's all this means. The total revenue per pupil, we generate approximately $12,000 per pupil in revenue, total revenue, local revenue, state revenue, other, and federal, okay? And then the statewide average is over 16,000. Go ahead, Mike. Then the total expenditure per pupil, this is something that we are, we are consistently very proud of, is that we spend $10,122 as of last year, fiscal '21, per pupil, and the statewide average is $13,386. We are in the lowest 20% of the state. In fact, I'm going to leaf through here and find a metric for you. There are only 19 districts in the state that spend less per pupil than Amherst. And we are consistently very high-performing district. That speaks volumes about the quality of this district and what we can do with the money generated. Go ahead, Mike. And then this is district average income, this is more demographic and financial data. Go ahead. These two pie charts, and the next two as well, these two are on the allocation of total revenues. And what I just really want to show you is how similar those pie charts are. The number 14 is the total allocation of revenues for Amherst, and exhibit 15 is the total for the state and up percent to the whole. So it's very, you can see, just visually, very, very similar. Go ahead to the next one. This is the same thing, percent to total for expenditures. Amherst on the left, statewide on the right. There are a couple of differences here, a little, not very obvious from looking at that, but the statewide salary benefit percentage added together is a couple of percent more than the salary benefit, percent to total for the district. Go ahead, Mike. I covered this really, really quickly. I would urge you to read the narrative, executive summary that I prepared. And really take a look at the 14 or so charts that I prepared for you. And if you're so interested, I did also include the data for Lorain County, the 14 Lorain County districts. The point that I want to make most is the prudent use of financial resources, our professional talent here in the district, strong leadership, enable us to provide this high-quality education to our students at an exceptional value. This is possible only with the engaged parents and strong community support and involvement that we enjoy here. So, does anybody have any questions? I covered that very, very quickly.
Thank you.
Yeah. This is the kind of stuff that Mr. Molnar likes, data mining.
Any other questions, Amy, on that presentation? If not, are you moving right on to your recommendations?
Yes. Item 9A is for the board to amend and/or approve the board minutes from the regular board meeting of March 14. Item B are the treasurer's.
Let's stop there for a minute.
Yes.
Item A, several people have not seen that because it wasn't in the Google Drive.
But it is in the Google Drive for some and not others, for some reason.
So there's an issue there that we, not everyone has seen the minutes, so I think we should.
That happens.
We can pass this around and then vote at the end if you'd like to do that. Mark, did you have it?
No.
I seem to be the only one that has it.
Did you get through it?
So we can, if we could come back to that as they look at that, and then they can all have an opportunity to do that.
Do you want me to make some copies?
Or would you like to have a copy, ever make a copy of it for you? How would you like to handle that? I mean, or we can just go phone it and vote on it again, but then it might be published for another month. So it's up to the pleasure of this board. All right, so we'll just pass it around. I have looked at it and seen it, and I didn't see anything glaring. So you rest of you can look at it, and then we can come back and vote on that. But you can proceed with your other items, but just vote on it separately.
Okay. 9B is the financials from the month of March. You have, as usual, the financial summary by Fund and Special Cost Center. That report includes everything, the beginning cash balance, the monthly revenue, revenue to date, monthly expenditures, expenditures fiscal to date, a fund balance, which is the current fund balance, encumbrances, and unencumbered fund balance, that's the right most called. There was a question that was posed via email about one of the student activity funds, 209144 Special Cost Center, I believe, NOR Student Activity Cap. Just so everybody knows, that account has had the same balance in it since we converted to Munus financial software. I do not know the makeup of that 160-something dollars. It's a residual amount. And if Mrs. Jovanacso cares to, we can ask the board to consider that a defunct account and move it by resolution to one of the other 200 funds at NOR. The other items in the financial reports are cash reconciliation, the forecast reports for Fund 1 and Fund 16, the emergency levy, and then finally, the checklisting. There was also a question about the checklist, and I trust that everybody saw that and received that statement. Then Items C are the 412 certificate, which just means that the board is approving this evening supplemental appropriations to the following Fund and Special Cost Center, an '08 patrol account, a high school '08 fund, otherwise called the principal's fund, and an increase for the Special Olympics 300, which is a district managed student activity. Item D is something that you only see once a year. The board is asked to approve the tax rates and amounts as presented by the county auditor's office. So simply, the tax rates and amounts are the voted or approved melages that were approved on the original ballot. The amounts are what the auditor estimates that the district will collect from effective rates. And then there was another listing of by fund, or excuse me, by levy, which is Schedule B. Does anybody have any questions about Schedule A and B from the county auditor, otherwise known as the tax rates and amounts? These amounts, these revenues that we will collect, will be the revenues that are estimated then for the fiscal '23 school year, which starts July 1st of '22. Item E is asking the board to approve a change in essential plan design for Ohioicard Comp to now offer a Roth 457 option. Just like a Roth IRA, they're post-tax deductions. Every other, you know, tax savings vehicle or annuity-type vehicle that we have in the district, both IRAs, 403s, and the 457, which is commonly referred to as deferred comp, those are both pre-tax. Now, Ohioicard Comp is offering a post-tax, like a Roth IRA, specifically for Ohioicard employees. Item F then are donations. I may have taken enough time for us to vote on the minutes as well. Would you like me to cover?
Wachols may need to review. So let's just vote on B through F. So we entertain a motion for judgment recommendations B through F at this time. Second, discussion on those items? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Dr. Messer. Mrs. Wachols.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi. We will keep on moving. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Just a few items here. First of all, a quick reminder, tomorrow evening is our state in schools, Powers Elementary, at 6:00 PM. First of all, a quick reminder, tomorrow evening is our State in Schools, Powers Elementary at six P M. So each of our principals will be sharing some information, really celebrating, you know, the things that we've been able to accomplish this year. Mr. Mulder, I know, sharing some things, Amy as well, all have a couple of thoughts to share. And then that will also be broadcast on Comments Live as well with Doug Cockell and his team, which is really great that we can livestream those things. So again, a quick reminder there. Also wanted to mention, I know Mr. Tepner hit our big interviews, Michelle Tellerier and Mary Scott Williams and their new roles. And certainly pending your approval this evening, it's exciting to be able to welcome Mary Scott into our administrative team, just that she's worked the job throughout the interview process. And it's great to have just talented folks right here in Amherst. So when these positions present themselves, we have folks that are in a position to move into those. So just a good, good thing, and we appreciate that. And I also wanted to mention, Michelle, Tellerier's position, that is not included on the agenda as that's an administrative transfer. So that's simply a, a transfer from one teaching position to another teaching position. So you won't see that on the agenda. But nonetheless, a very, very important position with your support. We think it's going to make a huge difference with our youngest learners and being able to address some of the things that Mr. Tepner had talked about previously. So certainly exciting to have Michelle moving into that new position. And then a couple of other items, wanted to take this opportunity, speaking of talented administrators, we have Ashley Herrigan, who is on the agenda this evening. Our, our recommendation is to approve Ashley as our new principal at NORD School. As the board knows, Ashley has been here for four years as an assistant principal at Steel High School, and has just done a remarkable job. And I know Mr. Tellerier is happy for Ashley. Happy for Ashley at the staff at Steel High School.
I was crying either way. I'm crying because she did it.
So it is a wonderful thing, and Ashley has background in working with, is a teacher, working with middle grade students, and just very, very talented and collaborative in her style. So certainly is a pleasure to include this evening on the agenda Ashley Herrigan as our new principal at NORD School. So wanted to mention that as well. And Ash, now I should just give you an opportunity now, is there anything you want to go ahead and submit to while we're here?
No, I just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity. You know, my family moved to Amherst four years ago when I took the position at Steel, and it's been just a wonderful opportunity for my family. My husband and my two kiddos are here that are at Powers, and so I'll have a year to kind of figure things out, and then I'll have my oldest one at NORD with me. So again, just thank you all for the opportunity. We love being part of the Amherst community, and I look forward to future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Tellerier has Mr. Tony, so help me just find him.
Well, thank you again. And just the last item I have, wanted to give the board a quick update on our Makerspace project. We had our bid opening on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon. And we were hoping to have a recommendation for you this evening. But unfortunately, we have only received one bid, and that bid is about three hundred thousand dollars above our estimated cost that was provided to us by GPT Architects. So there's a combination of factors, as you can imagine, that's driving that. So we, therefore, we don't have a recommendation for you this evening. In, in meeting with our team this morning and talking with GPT Architects, we're thinking probably the best approach at this point is to split out the, the two projects because, as you're aware, part of the project was a kind of renovation of some special education space here in the building, and then also the Makerspace part of that. So the thought is at this point is to break, to break those apart, rebid the special ed portion of the project, and we think that we can get an acceptable bid and have that ready for August. And then the thought is to bid the Makerspace separately with a substantial completion date of sometime in December, which should help us in being able to attract more bidders to the project. Mr. Tellerier, we talked this morning, and very creative, and being able to kind of work through the whole scheduling piece of this and finding some, some other locations for those classes for the first semester. But again, I did want to just update the board as kind of what's happening in the world now. These kinds of things are happening often, and so as we've done before, we've got to adjust, we've got to improvise, and we certainly will keep you posted as we move forward with this project. But we wanted you to get where, where we stand as of right now, because it was our hope to have a recommendation here this evening. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Sayers? None?
One in this one. Alright. I have one update, I'll keep it pretty short as someone's mentioned. State of the Schools is tomorrow, so come to State of Schools or check out on Comments Live. So, but I want to give one update. It's a little bit of a disappointing update, but it's factual. So a few months ago, I discussed that we were looking to pilot a second alternative to our Algebra Two course here at Steel High School. This year, we're piloting the Modeling and Reasoning course, which again, most districts around here in the county and the area, they are not, and so their only option is Algebra Two. We have a course this year, Latin Algebra Two and Modeling and Reasoning course. We applied next year due to the Data Science course, and we're excited that we have maybe three options in the Algebra Two realm. And we were approved by the state for that. But we afterward received an email saying that they made an error, and we will not be piloting the Data Science course next year. So it's kind of disappointing, in fact, to eliminate that from the course schedule. Hopefully, maybe the following year when the pilot year's over, we'll be able to add it anyway. We did ask for rationale why you were kind of approved and then not approved. We really didn't get, really didn't get a clear answer. But I really think the reason was because even, even this year, they, they want everyone to have a pilot. And so I think it was important to them that they gave every school wanted a pilot opportunity in the last two years to have one. And so probably I'm thinking we were a district we were approved, and they didn't check the list and see that we were approved for a pilot year before this year. Or it's possible that some pilot, some school districts that don't have a pilot came in last minute. They applied, you know, maybe, maybe two days after the deadline, and so it's possibly maybe took our pilot away and given to someone who has not had any. So again, I don't think there was anything farthest or negative about the decision. I just think that they just want to give everyone possibly an opportunity, and so they just took ours away and gave it to someone else. So congratulations to that district, she got a pilot. She will hopefully just wait another year, but you're ready for that, you're excited. So we'll, we'll move forward and look for a future alternative the following year. That's all I have for the board.
Any questions for Mike? None?
It was a record show that I appreciate you using the word nefarious. Yes. Do appreciate that. I have two updates for the board today. Two are just reminders, the week after this week, so next week, we have our Summer Activity Fair coming up on Wednesday. This is turning into be a, what our hope is a fabulous annual event. We have lots of organizations coming, Lorraine County Metro Parks, the Stomper from the Lake Erie Pressures is coming, we've got Big Brothers, Big Sisters on the Rocks, the Amherst Athletic Association, the high school will be there, high school students will be there doing face painting. We'll have a Rockwell from Bula Beach, and archery, inflatable archery from the Boy Scouts. It's just a lot of things that'll be going on at this event and with the whole goal of providing our families with opportunities for kids and for families to get active in the summertime. So that will be Wednesday, the twenty-seventh. And then we have added a parent night. Out of things that have been coming up throughout the buildings, Mercy Hospital will be presenting on Teen Banking. Those who are looking to addiction and resources to help, that will be on May fourth. It will be here in the Steel, CLC, along with being livestreamed via Comments Live. So those are two things coming up. And then the other thing I wanted to introduce you, the other thing, the other person. We always talk about the importance of relationships and making connections. And we know Mary Jane Lawson is retiring at the end of this year and leaving very big shoes to fill. And so we concluded our interviews with that, and one candidate stood out from the rest because she's right here. Christine Diaz, look at that. And her ability to make connections with the people at the table, her answers were very child-centered, student-centered, and very positive, and we just think that she is going to be an excellent addition to our team and welcome to the Amherst family. And if you would like to introduce, I didn't tell you you were going to talk.
No, it's okay. Christine Diaz, for those of you who haven't met, met me, I know some of you through my current position at Ombudsman. I work with some Amherst students there, so Alternative Education Program. But I'm very excited to come here, and I feel very honored and privileged to be part of the Comic family. So thank you very much. I've been, like, everybody's been so welcoming, I just love it. So I'm very excited to begin. So thank you guys very, very much.
We're excited. And that concludes our part.
Nineteen to zero. None? Move on to the J B S report. J B S held their annual board retreat a couple of weeks ago. A lot of focus in that retreat focused on a couple of things. One, it focused on boardsmanship, and we did a whole complete review of boardsmanship and the role the board plays. It's very important that the thirteen districts work together. So that was a focal, focal point of that retreat, as was the topic of the levy. We haven't made a date or a decision about what they're going to do with the levy yet, but that was a topic of discussion at that board retreat. So as spring always brings, it's competition time, so there's a lot of competitions happening with the J B S students at every level, from the local level, getting ready to go to state level, and then hopefully some of those will advance to the national level, which could be have several teams go to the national level in the J B S. The spring flower sale will begin on April the twenty-fifth. So you can go get your spring flowers and support the greenhouse program out there as well. Is there any questions for me about the J B S? You don't have to order them ahead, ahead of time this year. They have certain hours that they've always had, however, they will sell out rather quickly. Last year, you did have to place an order and then go pick it up. But it's my understanding that's not happening this year, it will actually be open.
Okay.
Okay? And it's opening just in time for the May Mother's Day, which will be a couple of weeks before, but it'll, it'll go fast. Any other questions? If not, we will move on to any other reports or administrative reports that we forgot. Oh, you, you have a report, yeah. I have a new, and.
Yeah, so Dr. Messer and I, Curriculum Committee, and Michael's nice enough to get with us, and the literacy coaches, math coaches. So there'll be more emails, and Rhian Burton, and Harris Cox. They gave up an evening to teach us about how curriculum, excuse me, is chosen. We talked about bridges, who, as you know, has been introduced for teaching provide this year. We got to see some videos of like kids, I don't know if you want to watch it or not.
I hope we're into it, we showed it.
Okay, yeah. So she even like showed us a video of like the kids using bridges, like in the classroom, and how they're using like a lot of different. There's just a lot of other stuff, just sitting and doing work, which was really nice to see. So we even got to like look through some of like the different curriculums that they're going to be piloting, which Michael's saying is the piloting comes for the high school, because now it's going to be the six through twelve term, the new math curriculum. There is a bridge connection that we choose to go that way, but it was really interesting. And then we also talked a lot about Health Bill four thirty-six, which is on the support. And, sorry, I had you get all ready at all, I'm just talking too fast. And then, anyhow, about the Health Bill, and they were mentioning that we have some professional development days that built into the schedule next year, so the teachers can prepare for that because with that, there are specific trainings that they have to go through. It'll be nice, and I believe that the training is going to be in the building.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're seeing the person in-house, so it can be done right at Powers Elementary, and no one has to go anywhere. And again, having a professional development day where those students are in the district, they don't have to worry about substitutes and plans, and they can focus in on professional development pretty flexibly, so.
So we're going to be like ahead of the game really, because what we're going to have all districts are going to have to do, and we're going to build in to next year's plan, so it'll be nice. And I just, I appreciated them giving up their evenings, and I talked to Emily and I about everything that's going on. They were just like very engaging, and it was nice to see everyone was so happy there. We just really appreciated that, like, Emily has gave up their evening to teach us about the whole curriculum process and what's to talk. And they did have a video, but I don't know if you're watching the kids like.
Do you have anything else for us you want to add to that, or?
Oh, I just, I really enjoyed the evening as well, thanks for all of your time. It's great, well, you know, we have amazing teachers here, but it's great to see their, like, guys with the money to coach others and build everyone else up, so it was great.
So we have like a minute forty-six second video of some video from the kids at Powers, just a new math program, and again, prove us all the Powers teachers do this. This video is created because they've done such a phenomenal job this year. It's really awesome, so hopefully it's sounding.
One more time.
It's amazing.
Questions for the curriculum committee? No one? Thank you very much. Is there any other administrative or committee reports that we need to have tonight? If not, we will move on to the personnel recommending, wait, before we do that. Everyone's had our, we're seeing the need to do the, let's not forget that. So we entertain a motion to accept the minutes as they were presented for the March board meeting. You moved it, okay? It's like you said.
I did.
Motion accepted, that's why I just wanted to make sure I had this. You have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any comments or discussion on the minutes for the regular reading of the board? None? Please call the board.
Mrs. Wackles?
Hi.
Mr. Zepha?
Hi.
Mrs. Gillis?
Hi.
Dr. Messer? Mr. Engel?
Hi.
Now we'll move on to the personnel recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Engel. I know the board has had an opportunity to take a look at the agenda items, and individual board members have an opportunity to reach out with questions, and hopefully we've been able to clarify those. And as you're all aware, April is the month where we handle many of our contracts for our licensed employees. And then you'll see, next month, you'll see a lot of contract recommendations for support staff. But for this month, the focus is on our licensed staff. Again, I know we've had an opportunity to review these, did want to highlight a couple of items. Item J is the recommendation for Ashley Herrigan. Item J is the recommendation for Ashley Harrigan to become our new principal at Nord, which we spoke of earlier. Item K is our recommendation to hire Mary Scott Williams as our assistant principal at Powers Elementary. And then item L, we have Christine Diaz moving into a counseling position here at Steel High School. So certainly happy to make those recommendations. I did want to highlight, item Q is a little bit different. It's a memorandum of understanding. We have a very collaborative working relationship with our associations. And this MOU was basically created, we have a part-time preschool, a teacher who needs to move to full-time for the remainder of the school year and a return to part-time for next year. So there's a way to do this without an MOU, but it's a lot more lengthy and complicated. Whereas we can just get together and say, here's how it works, and here's a, here's a solution that we all agree on. So wanted to clarify that item as well. And with that, I would like to recommend approval of items 12A through 12R.
No motion for 12A through R? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion or comments on any of those items? Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Dr. Messer.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Item 13 is a board recommendation, but before I take that board recommendation, I also need to make sure that everyone has responded to whether or not you're going to attend the senior awards banquet at German Village, and being a 10. So I'm going to just pass this around, and then you can acknowledge us, no, undecided at this point in time. I think we got an email about that as well, so I hope you can, we respond to that email. But Janet wants to make sure that everyone's accounted for, so if you could do that. Right, and then item 13 is the board recommendation. As you've all seen in print and received, that Mr. Sayers has given his letter of resignation for retirement at the end of this year, the 31st of December. So we would need to take action on that, to accept that resignation as a board, as a employee. So do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'm not sure.
We have a motion and a second. Is there some discussion or comments about that?
I just want to say what a great job you've done. You really have done an outstanding job here in Amherst. And you really have brought the community together and the staff, and done wonderful things for the students. And I know you always don't want to take credit for yourself and say it's a team, but it's, but you're the leader, and it takes a leader to make everything work, so thank you.
Thank you. I guess I would just say that I'm very thankful, very grateful, you know, for the opportunity to serve as part of the school district and community for the last 14 years. It's a, it's a wonderful place, and we have a wonderful staff, very dedicated, talented, hardworking. Just, just an outstanding group of people we have that work with our kids each and every day. We also have a community that supports and values education, and I'm so grateful for that, and so thankful. And by everyone working together, our staff and our community, I think we've been able to do some neat things over these last 14 years. So again, thank you to the board of education, thank you to our staff, thank you to our community. It's been a wonderful, wonderful run, and just, we just cherish, we just always cherish the memories that we've had here in Amherst. So again, thank you very much.
And I would just comment that in these 14 years that Steve has been the helm of the school district, I would have to say that when he came on board, there were lots of things that were not as positive then as they are today. And we certainly have seen a lot of changes. We have had a much brighter forward thinking, 14 years, I think, than we had had. Because if you recall, we struggled with some money. You know, we had put levies on the ballot many times, and it didn't feel, some of the people didn't feel like it was their job as administrators or staff, as a board, to help get those levies passed. I know that initially Steve was defeated a couple of times with some of that process, but together we did turn that around, and I think that you can see that his mind is always to move the district forward in a positive way, which has happened very much. I also think that we changed the way we think about educating kids in the district a lot in those 14 years. And when you look at the graphs, and you look at the demonstration of what we saw tonight, and Amy's presentation along with what we heard, you know, 17 years ago, that wouldn't have been the case in some of those scenarios. It would have been a little bit weaker. But we are one of the premier school districts in Lorraine County. And thanks to your leadership and putting the correct team together, we know we have a task ahead of us that's going to have to move that needle in a different direction than it's moved in the last 14 years, or even higher standard. So on behalf of the board of education, Steve, I personally thank you for all of your dedication and the many times that you thought, can we really do this? Is it going to be okay? Are we taking on what we can handle? None of that has been true. You've always stepped up to the plate and made the right, people make the right decisions, so thank you on behalf of that. There's no other comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor, and we need to vote.
I just want to say thank you again. I'm just so, so blessed to be surrounded by so many wonderful people. Amherst is a special place, and yeah, thank you so much.
Please call the roll.
Dr. Messer.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
We would move on to item number 14, educational recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Again, we have a few items here that I know the board's had an opportunity to review. And again, these are contracts as we work to prepare for the 22, 23 year. You know, such things as photography, services for special needs students, staffing that we arranged through Lorraine County Public Health, staffing that we arranged through the Lorraine County ESC in our partnership with them. Did want to highlight item E. This is a little bit different item, which is a recommendation to authorize a third grade English flying charts and math assessments to be given in paper format next year. I know Mr. Bolar and Mr. Tepner and our staff are involved with this, and the feeling is really puts our students in a better position to perform even better on that test, so we have this option. And so we want to take advantage of that option as we look to the 22, 23 school year. And then the last item is a contract with the Camp Lorraine County Public Health. This was a grant that was written by Kim Haney. You've heard of Kim Haney's name before, very involved, working with Chuck Grimick, Rob Glass. And we've been able to install the walking track at Amherst Junior High School. And this grant will allow us to provide some concrete, some benches, some garbage cans, some signage, and really kind of finish, finish that project up this summer. So certainly is a pleasure to be able to make that recommendation as well. And with that, would like to recommend approval of items 14A through 14F.
Need a motion? And a second? Motion and a second, is there comments or discussion on any of those items? Then our 14. Hearing or seeing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Dr. Messer.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Item 15.
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Engel. Our business recommendations, just five items here. Wanted to highlight a couple of these. Item B is the board is where we try to work with other school districts and collaborate. We've done, you know, we've done similar agreements with Old Line Thing, for a million. And this is just an example of, we have a student with special needs that we transport to Westlake. And so we have a van going there every day anyway, and clearly he has a, has a need for some help with transportation. So by picking up their student, we're actually able to help them provide transportation, and it actually reduces our cost, because they're billed for a portion of their transportation service. So this is just an example of how the school districts in Lorraine County work together, and it's one of those things that's mutually beneficial. And then item C is an item where, where to that time of year, we're, believe it or not, we're planning for our tournaments, our end of year track meets and district track and regional track and baseball, softball, all those kinds of things. And this is in agreement with the Ohio High School Athletic Association to host those events. And then the last item I want to mention is our payment in lieu of. The board is where we have an obligation to transport students to private schools if it's practical. Those parents have the ability to request that transportation, and we evaluate those requests. Team Board has really done a wonderful job with this, and if we're able to accommodate the requests and transport, we do. Most often, we're not able to do that, you know, without negatively impacting our routes and our transportation. So that's where the payment in lieu of comes from. If we're not able to provide that transportation, we provide a payment in lieu of that. So this is, this is actually for some of our high school students. Now, we provide high school busing, which is a good, good thing. And we, we didn't have that service, I think, until three or four years ago, but now that we're doing that, we also have some families that are choosing to send their children to private schools. And so we have to make this available to high school students as well. So wanted to just clarify that and rationale for that recommendation. Would like to recommend approval of items 15A through 15B.
You have a motion and a second, please? Discussion or comments on 15A through B? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa. Dr. Messer.
Mrs. Wackels.
Mr. Engel.
We do have one other piece of business that we need to talk about that I forgot to bring up there under the board section here. So we need to have a meeting at the end of May, I mean, the end of March, April.
May.
May, I mean. We need to have a meeting the end of May, because we have to do forecasts, the five-year forecast update, and it has to be submitted by the end of May. It will not be ready for us, because the next board meeting is on May the 29th. So therefore, we would like to have that board meeting, which will only probably be about a 15-minute, 20-minute board meeting to review briefly the five-year forecast, because it's just going to pilot any updates. So we are looking at doing that in the morning at 7:30. Does that work for, does the time work for everyone, so that your whole day? We didn't know about you. Dr. Messer, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Does it work for you? That's awesome, that's fine. I mean, they're welcome to be here, it's a public meeting. So, but we thought instead of making everyone rush and be done, if we could do it at 7:30 in the morning, that would work. So does the, um... Does the 25th, 26th, 24th, what day works better for everyone? 26, Thursday, the 26th, does that work for everyone? So therefore, we will have a special board meeting on May the 26th at 7:30. Does that work? And it'll be at the board office. It's a Thursday. So there will be a special request, and I wanted, I know there had been some discussion asked about that, and some people have responded. And then when, when I looked at it, I thought, do we really need to have a, you know, if you do it first thing we want to hear big comment about today and not worry about getting here for 15-minute meetings.
Just to, just to note, I'll probably wait some time before I make notice of the special meeting. On the special meeting, you have to identify the purpose of the meeting, and May may a huge month for personnel issues. We anticipate it'd be, be toward the five-year forecast and some of these personnel issues.
There might be something we have to take action on if we get something, so it'll be minimal though.
Right, that's correct.
Many, for, at this time, we don't anticipate it being many. So it'll be on that Thursday, the 26th, at 7:30 in the morning. The other item is we will adjourn into executive session to discuss the appointment of employment or position of employment this evening with no action at all. I need a motion to do that. Needing a second? Second. Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mrs. Gillis.
Hi.
Mrs. Wackels. Dr. Messer.
Hi.
Mr. Zappa.
Hi.
Mr. Engel.
Hi.
Thank you all.